Called the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, September 11, 2017, 6:00 PM. City Council Room. All members of the council are present, except for Ms. Robouin, who is absent. Others present include James Johnson, Acklerb Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Mayor. And at this time, I would like to just have a moment of silence in remembering the 9/11 of the folks who passed away on that horrendous day. Thank you. The next item will be to approve the minutes of August 21, 2017.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of 21 August, 2017, with a correction on the first page by halfway down, comments by members of the public. We're missing the word "city" in the second line down. He announced the received $79,000 grant to be the city. Because follow-up says the city received the grant for $3800 from the EOC.
He announced the city received. So I'll write that here. I'll write that here, correct. Is there a second to the motion with the correction?
Second.
Motion made second with the correction. Anything else on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is the comments by members of the public. And we have this McCarthy who would like to speak.
A wither?
Yeah. You're on the list, that's true.
Oh, all right. I thought there was two ahead of me. If we need a couple more than two minutes, what do we have to do to be granted? Because I'd like...
It's going to be two minutes because we have a heavy agenda this evening. Very heavy agenda.
Well, all right, maybe you can answer a couple questions for me quick. On the meetings supposedly that they've been advertised in the paper, did any of the council members know about that down to the Gateway? When that firm was having their report or...
That was a steering committee meeting set up by NCRC. It was not a council meeting.
Who invited the press then?
That's all I'm going to say. There's nothing more to say.
Well, everybody knows about it, Paul. Isn't that right?
I'm not going to say. That's all I'm going to say.
Basically, you're saying the council shouldn't be there.
I'm not going to discuss this in this meeting. It's been covered by the press. It's been covered in many emails. It's been covered. There's nothing more to discuss about it. I do have Karen Garrity, who I guess would like to say something if you...
Well, then, when is... Let me ask you this then. When is the public going to be involved in this? When are we going to be considered?
Just a second.
I can provide clarification on that. So I'm Karen Garrity. I'm with NVDA, but I also serve as the interim Chair of the Board for NCRC at the moment. I want to provide some clarification on the meeting at the Gateway because it was incorrectly misconstrued in two of the papers, Newport Daily Express and The Chronicle. And I can explain what that meeting was as part of the process of working with White and Burke. The meeting on the 23rd of August was a meeting of stakeholders convened by Newport City Renaissance Corporation. The stakeholders were a group of businesses in Newport, all local businesses. NCRC is a 501(c)(6), which is a nonprofit dedicated to business interests, soliciting business interests. So currently, NCRC is working with the local businesses. In this development process, our local business leaders have both the experience and the knowledge of Newport over decades of what has worked here, what hasn't worked here, why. And this is very useful information for the consultants to learn about. This was not... So this was a group of stakeholders. The city was invited to sit on that stakeholder meeting. He was represented by the mayor. And... But this was one of several stakeholder meetings that have been happening since White and Burke took over this project on behalf of the city of Newport. So this was a meeting to solicit information. This is still part of their discovery phase. It was also a meeting to solicit additional funding for work that still needs to be done, that was identified and still needs to be done in this development process. So again, this was only one stakeholder meeting. The hospital has been interviewed. The educational institutions have been interviewed. All of the stakeholders in the city have been interviewed. As part of this process of gathering information, the next step of this process will be... So if you want to read about what actually happened at the meeting, I would suggest to everybody to pick up a copy of this September 9 Orleans County Record, Robin's story on some of the results of that meeting, the funding that was solicited, the work that still needs to happen in terms of the consultant's work. That's what happened at this particular meeting. Now, again, we've said this a number of times, but it bears repeating. This is a long process. So this was not a secret meeting. This was not a meeting of decisions about what's happening in the city. This was simply information gathering and direction pointing as to where we might possibly go with development and soliciting additional funds to go forth with this work. The next step will be a full public presentation of the report by White and Burke to the city council in the early part of October. The next step of that, and of course, that makes it a community report as well, the next step of that will be to host... There'll be a hosted community input session over about three months of period hosted by the Vermont Council of Rural Development that will be brought to bear on the results of this preliminary work. Again, this is all preliminary. I ask people when I'm out there, "Do you know how many buildings were across the street that were taken down?" Most people go, "Six, seven." There were actually nine. Then I ask people, "When was the last building constructed in Newport? Downtown Newport, the designated downtown." Well, we know it's Maple Fields in 2014. It's a convenience store and a gas station. But what was the building constructed in downtown Newport prior to that? What do you want to guess? It's the Heber Building, 20 years ago in 1997. So in 24 years, we've had two construction projects in Newport. How long do we think it's going to take to replace nine buildings in our downtown area? This is going to take time. There's a process that's involved. This is preliminary information. If I sound emotional, it's because I take exception to the comments that where people were excluded. This is not a process of exclusion. We need all hands on deck to develop this community. And when we talk about developing Newport, we talk about developing your community, my community. We are Newport. Everyone has a say. But we have to get baseline information. We have to get market studies. We have to know potentially what might happen. And we have to pull funding together to make it happen. So we are very early in this phase. NCRC is working as hard as it can to maintain the designation for the downtown, to bring benefits to the downtown. But this meeting was just a preliminary meeting that White and Burke asked for with the business community on top of other meetings and conversations that they have had with the hospital, the schools, and other stakeholders in the community. The larger community process is coming. So that's effectively, I hope, a clarification of what that meeting was. The city council had a copy of the report. They were not excluded from this meeting because they were not included in the meeting. It was not an intentional exclusion. They were not part of this meeting. They weren't the group of stakeholders that were being sought opinions. That will come forth when White and Burke submits the final report with this information to them in early October. The community will also have incredible input into this. But again, it can't be just a wish list. There has to be a plan and there has to be funding. That's all I have to say. I hope it's sufficient.
Thank you.
No, I'm not done yet.
Well, I'm going to end it.
Paul?
Are you going to end it?
No. We're always being... Every time somebody comes in here, there's always some excuse to go around the bush and go around the bush and cut everybody out. Now, she gave her presentation. That was... I didn't give my two minutes. Now, this stuff of not saying these guys here can't know about it is bull. You could have told them about it.
Excuse me. If you're going to get feisty, keep it calm.
Well, then listen.
Okay. No, just keep it calm. And this whole thing about, you know, "I've been accused of being secretive and lack of transparency." Oh, I want to say that's bull. If you saw the number of meetings that I attend on behalf of the city, did I provide the council every little detail of every meeting I go to? No. I've gone to meetings where business owners have asked me to go to, and they've actually sworn me not to come back to make information public because I talk about private business information. So I don't report anything back to the city council. I've been asked not to by businesses because they don't want proprietary information released to the public. So yes, I go to meetings all the time that I don't report back to the city. So for people to accuse me of not being transparent, I was invited as a member of the steering committee to this meeting. I didn't call the meeting. It was an invitation of the steering committee that I am a member of. I'm a member of many committees.
Who invited the press?
That I don't know. I have no idea.
This is what I'm getting at. You're saying if it was private or certain people are in it, that's fine. But when the press is invited in and it gets out, and then we come up here trying to find out a question, you pick right down to two minutes, bull. Now, number one, I'm enhanced. I take the conception, and it's very disrespectful to say just a bunch of businessmen want a hotel, or they want upgraded apartments. And the living people here are basically low-risk people because we pay low-risk rents. If you're going to do a survey, then they do a survey of everybody. I'm tired of hearing just the businesses, the businesses. Newport isn't the businesses. It's the people that all live out there that support this business. And I think that's what they're going to think of. And if you don't want us sitting here hollering, when stuff comes out like that in a paper, then you're going to have somebody to put something in there to say something about it. That's all I'm trying to get across to you, and that'll avoid a lot of trouble, Paul. I'm not blaming you or anybody specifically for nothing. But when you let a certain entity sit in there and it gets out to the public, you're going to expect this.
Well, I was not running the meeting and they... No one, they decided not to ask the press to leave once the press was there. That was not...
They weren't invited as part of the steering committee.
All right. But what I'm trying to say is I understand everything you said. But when the people find out the press are there and it gets out and we ask questions and then we're cut off with the two-minute thing, it's bull.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're asking the wrong people the questions. You should be asking the steering committee the question. Maybe you ought to ask the press earlier if they found out about it.
Right. The press did not hear. The press approach no one from NCRC to ask about the meeting.
Well, why should we always ask the press? If somebody even released it, they should have enough heart to release it here.
Do not get in an argument with me.
No, no. I am... You made your statement of...
Do not get in an argument with me, Ken.
Somebody else could tell us.
Let's move on. Karen just mentioned that...
One more thing and we'll move on.
The only member of the press who approached NCRC for clarification was Robin. Now, she was the only member of the press, and she was given full information on that meeting, what happened and what occurred. And they were very good things that occurred to push this work forward.
Can I offer something that was as a result of that meeting? Today, I'm pleased to announce that NCIC, Northern Communities Investment Corporation, in collaboration with Preservation Trust, Paul Bruin, have offered to pay for the hotel feasibility study. And this is a wonderful boon. My goal... I've been working with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development ever since that meeting, and they have been offering a number of grants that we can look at to take this to the next level. I don't have anything definitive for tonight's meeting. I have a conversation scheduled with them tomorrow, but I'm very hopeful that the expanded scope, we may be able to include more than just the downtown block. We may be able to include our waterfront and our downtown designation. I've got to work on that tomorrow. We're also eligible for a number of other grants. But one in particular is called the Better Connections Grant Program. This is very comprehensive. I just started looking at it. I've been connected to a person who's in charge of that. So again, we have a number of hopeful options that are coming in the future that I'll have a better handle on in the coming weeks. I just haven't been able to do more than that. But as an example of the fruits of that labor, it's right here. So I'm tickled about that. Good.
The next, Ann Chirillo. You had something that you wished to speak about?
I don't think I was next, but sure.
Yeah, you are next.
Sure. I'm Ann Chirillo, and I'm a Newport resident. And my question, as the beginning of the topic, is really, who's running the show? Burke and White was hired by the city council by a vote to write a report on what could be done with the hole. You would have thought that the city council would have authorized, if they had known about it, Burke and White to then do a report and a steering committee with NCRC. It's my understanding that the city council knew nothing about that. And when I read various articles in the paper, for instance, the police department now says it has a shortage of staff. And when Dennis was asked about that by one of the press, I believe, he said he knew nothing about that. And when John Wilson asked Colleen about why the rep department was cutting programs or how she got that information, she said a letter had been sent to her, but John Wilson didn't know anything about that. And so I asked the city council in general to think about whether or not you're getting the information, which, you know, you didn't even want the stuff to come out until the morning of these meetings because you wanted to be informed about what we would be discussing. And then you're not even being told some of the critical information ahead of time. It comes out in a press release about the police department situation. It comes out in a letter to the families that the rep department isn't going to do its programs anymore. And you didn't really know, I mean, to be honest about it, you didn't really know about this meeting that some of us, because we heard rumors of, got to attend. And some of the information and the questions that some of the public asked at this meeting were considered by Mr. White to be interesting at least. So the more of us that can contribute our ideas, the better the report is going to be. And the sale of that property is predicted to happen. Mr. White said originally in September, now maybe October, November, "You don't have a lot of time to get the public involved in our thoughts." And maybe any one of our ideas is not brilliant. But certainly, when somebody else contributes to it and somebody else contributes to it, we got a good idea. Don't keep the city council in the dark. Don't keep the public in the dark. We voted for the city council, who then decided to hire Burke and White. And what's happening here is that too many people sit on too many organizations and they can't remember whether they're NVDA today or the Renaissance Board and what they really have the authority, what they really have the authority to do.
Your time is up.
So I asked the city council to really think about what's happening here.
Okay, moving on. Do you have a comment?
I have several if you'd like them, but I'm not on your list.
Okay. We're going to move on. The next item is Recreation Department Harbor Master Appointment, Recommendation and Vote.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Let's bring you up to the chair. Everyone's always making a seat.
I moved your own chair.
I mean, really. I have a heavy packet for me this week. Time is ticking, as you can see, so we're kind of trying to cram everything in before I go. The first item on the agenda, of course, is our Harbor Master Appointment. So Norbert was reappointed this March for a two-year term as Harbor Master, but things in his life changed and he didn't plan on coming back next summer. So in preparation for that, we were hoping to have a new Harbor Master appointed ahead of time so that he can catch the end of this year's season and start a little bit of training while we were in the flesh of the season as opposed to the off-season. So I connected with the Harbor Commission and dock staff, talked over a plan, and put out an advertisement for the position. And met in mid-August with a few different candidates that had applied. And the five of us, there was two there for the Harbor Commission, a couple dock staff and myself, so five of us interviewed the current thinking man. The Harbor Commission would like to recommend Jim Nagel as our new Harbor Master. I would like to look into him for availability a little bit further and come this season and start immediately. Jim is also here tonight. This is Jim Nagel right here. He's got a lot of experience in the U.S. Coast Guard, which is thirty-plus.
I noticed, yeah, thirty years' experience in the U.S. Coast Guard.
And lots of other maritime experience. So we think that he's going to be, he's going to meet and exceed our expectations down there for the Harbor Master and can really lead us in a new direction of growth. We've been needing a little bit of revamping down there to get ourselves up to snuff. So we think that he's going to be great for that.
Do we have questions from any of the council members? Mr. Nagel's appointment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go along with the recommendation and appoint James Nagel as the Harbor Master.
Motion made. It's a second. Made and seconded. Discussion on that?
I guess it's just a very small question. This is primarily a summer season.
Yeah, so heavily in the summer, but also a few hours a week during the winter to keep up with registration processes and things like that.
So you're going to stay in Lindenville and come up over the heights?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, fantastic. We're excited to have you.
Not a problem.
It snows in the summer, we're probably...
Yeah. That's what's happening. We may have to...
It's always a possibility.
All right. So most of it made and seconded. Any other discussion? Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Congrats, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My pleasure to serve.
Thank you. The next one you have was Umbrella Pause for a Cause, Request to Waive Fees for the October 14 event.
Yes, so I met with Savannah and Roxanne. They're actually here in the back row there. I'll have them come up and give you their information here a little bit. But this is a new event that they're looking to put together, and they plan to host it on October 14. It's a domestic abuse awareness walk that involves pets and stuff, so it's a dog walk even covering their pets. And they're going to have a few other activities. They're planning on hosting it in the Amsterdam Causeway area, and they are looking to have the fees waived to rent that space, which is $210. This isn't a large event application. They're now expecting over 100 people, so they plan on going along with its normal rental that they are requesting to have the fees waived for the event. Do you guys want to come on up and tell them a little bit about your event?
Roxanne. Hi. My name is Roxanne Rebarret. I'm the program manager for Umbrella's advocacy program. I'm one of the three full-time employees that provide services to all victims and survivors in Orleans and Northern Essex County. It's myself, Savannah, and another young woman who works in our office, her name is Nicole Nelson. And the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month is in October, next month. And we generally try to host some sort of activity or resource table somewhere to move some awareness in the community. But one of the issues that is often overlooked is the correlation between domestic violence and cat abuse. So we're hoping to host an event that would bring some acknowledgement to that issue. We're very often placed in situations where victims or survivors are looking to, you know, leave an abusive home or an abusive situation, but often choose to stay there because they don't have any options for pets that they're very concerned about and don't want to leave behind. So this is an opportunity for us to raise some awareness to that.
In June, I was invited to the high school to participate in a health class event where students were talking about a social justice change project that was kind of near and dear to their heart. So I met this young woman who was talking about the correlation between intimate partner violence and animal abuse. And I walked away from her feeling jazzed and pumped by her energy and her ideas. And as I was walking away, I was like, "We have to do something. Like, there has to be something that we can help her kind of spread the word." And so as I was moving away from her desk, I was like, "Oh, it'd be so fantastic if we could do some kind of dog walk." So I got back to the office, and all of these ideas just came flooding. And so it would be great to kind of make this a reality. And we're hoping, like Jessica said, to do a dog walk and kind of resource fair or with different activities for families and kids, so it's not all heavy, but can be fun and exciting.
Where's the walk from? I did really send one here, I don't think, unless I missed it. I didn't see where you're walking.
Yeah. So we were just going to go from the causeway and stay on like the bike path.
So I'm sure it's similar to the Obi-Wan awareness, similar to the Darkness.
I was just curious because it didn't have it on here. And, you know, I think it's great watching the puppy dogs. They're going to have a school present. No, I'm just thinking that, you know, get ahead.
We're going to make sure that our, the people that register have everything that they need to make sure that they can take care of their pets and also to make sure that they aren't malicious.
No, those were the only two things, so it was a pad.
I'm not sure if you're interested, but I did bring the vendor flyer and the event poster.
So they maybe begun doing their homework and planning their event, and plan on moving forward regardless, but I think we certainly appreciate the city's support.
Yes.
Do we need police support?
I checked with Officer Lancaster.
To get onto the sidewalks?
That's something we'll have to look into regarding their route. I'm not sure that the route is finalized yet, but probably we could have police support or, you know, someone to certify.
Some kind of traffic control as they're crossing over.
That's a good suggestion.
I think this is good, even though I am a cat lover.
I don't think I can put my cat on a leash.
Might not be too happy about that.
No, I think it's great. Any questions from council members on this?
I see you've got local veterinarians and councils also possibly taking part. They'd be selling out booths or anything like that.
Well, that's what we're hoping, is that they would be interested in advertising their business and, you know, just having a table with some information there. That's what our goal is, hopefully.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we need a motion to not only approve the event, but to waive if we so choose to waive if we so choose?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this event and waive the $210 rental fee and give our 400 blessings to this wonderful...
So motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion on this motion from anyone? Then hearing none. Hearing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with the event. The next item is the recreation vehicle bids.
So in this year's budget, capital project was $16,000, set for a recreation vehicle, recreation vehicles vehicle. It looked immediately at buying a used vehicle, but couldn't really find one that was satisfactory. So started looking down the route of having a new vehicle and putting, you know, a portion of that as a down payment and then financing the rest. So we put out bids for local dealers, got three back, which are shown here. And I'd like to go through the dates for linking with the council if that is...
So just to let everyone know, the three bids are as follows. North Point was $33,716. Delabrieue Auto Sales was $32,59213. Delabrieue Auto Sales was $32,592.13. And Hayes Ford Lincoln was $26,455.16. So, you're recommending the Hayes Ford.
Yep. It's a pretty minimalistic vehicle, but at this point, you don't have it on in Gardner Park. We acquired the ton truck from Public Works that's housed over at Party Beach and use most of the operations there, but Mac has kind of been operating using the truck this summer, so we need to get another vehicle over there.
And this one from Hayes Ford is a 2018 Ford F-150...
Regular cab.
Regular cab.
Yep.
Four by four. Oh, it's four by four, yeah. Questions from council members? Then, we would need a motion if we so choose to accept the bid from Hayes Ford.
Mr. Mayor, I would be accepted if it from Hayes Ford for an F-150.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Sorry?
Made and seconded. Any other discussion on this motion to accept the bid from Hayes Ford? Then, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. The next under the Rec Department would be the 2018 fees and rate proposal. So, we all received the memo from the...
Yep. So, this is important given some of the conversations that we've had earlier in the year. Since I've been in the position of Rec Parks and Recreation Director, we've kind of been taking into account all of the users that are in our parks. We never really had a registration process before, so it was kind of just word of mouth who was there when. And that caused a little bit of conflict as far as scheduling and inconsistent fee collection for our users. Some users were paying nothing, some users were paying the full boat, somewhere in between. So, we're trying to get to a level of continuity for that. So, this is an important memo just given, or this is an important subject just in the way that once council approves these rates, this is what the Rec Department will go by for every user. Anyone that wants something different from what's on this sheet will have to approach you guys and request that. So, you can see that I took the existing rates that we had from 2017, increased everything by 3%, and then added some other rates that were not listed on this, either because, I don't know, they just didn't make the list or because we didn't have those options yet for both, you know, scheduling and things like that. So, just trying to make it all inclusive and clear. Added some definition of terms. And then, the other big thing for the policy for scheduling deals and things like that, we did add a 25% damage deposit. When we first started putting kind of our scheduling policy together, we found that we very, in fact, have never kept the damage deposit, and it's created a lot of extra work getting refunds sent to people who've been a lot of users of the park. So, we decided to get rid of the 25% damage deposit, and if we felt the need to collect additional fees because of the condition of the facility, we would build that after the fact and go from there. And then, that's pretty much the summary of things. Did you guys have questions? Are there any questions on anything in the middle? Can we recommend a question or a comment just to clarify the extra fees? Your form takes that into consideration, so before anybody decides a part, they know that there is a possibility of they'd be unanticipated damage that they will have to pay for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? As you said, we raised over the 3%, although there are some things that did come down in place. On the second page, upper tent shelter rental, there's all been done.
Yes, you'll see in the notes there, I was referring to each. So, originally, we were charging the same fee for the upper tent shelter as we were for the lower pavilion. The lower pavilion is much larger, it has power, water, there's a barbecue grill down there. The upper tent shelter is literally a tent that's probably half the size of that with no power and water, so we didn't think that the value was the same there. We decided to shrink that down a little bit, and I spoke with Andy about what he thought the value was there relative to the other rentals that we have, and that was the figure that we came up with, so.
And also, on the front page, more than inspection, construction, and repair, $100 minimum is lowered, that's eighty-five.
So, there is still a $100 minimum. What we're finding down at the dock is that initially what we were charging was $100 per occurrence, whether it took us three hours to do it, or whether it took us one hour, or whether it took us two guys or one guy. So, what we decided to do was still have that $100 minimum, so the fee for that, but if it took us two hours or more, we were going to start adding things on top of that to cover staff and time and the use of equipment and things like that. So, it's an hourly rate now instead of a per occurrence, because some moorings are much more involved with the moorings.
The same on the boat rescue?
Yeah, boat rescue.
It's better to have because you just had a flat minimum. So, if it took you three hours to go rescue a boat, or five whatever, we rarely were covering the cost because it usually takes two, takes the harbor master usually and an employee sometimes, the way the boats are, to rescue him. So, now it's a per hour, which actually...
That wasn't previously...
No, well, no, they had a, yeah, it was previously, the boat rescue was a minimum of, it was a minimum of 100 before, and now it's...
But it doesn't show on here?
Doesn't show on here.
Yeah.
From 15 through 17.
Right, it didn't show.
Yeah, my notes may not have been as clear as they could have been on there, but it used to be per occurrence, and now it's an hourly. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor? The big thing here, I think, for us is, like I said, adding the continuity, but also just taking into account the fact that minimum wage has gone up, the fact that we've never really had a decent maintenance schedule for some of the larger ticket items like Gardner Park's playground, that is going to be a huge expense to even bring it up to safety. So, we want, what we're looking to do is have the users generating that revenue for us, the folks that are really heavily using the parks as opposed to the general taxpayers who may never step foot on the playground. So, just trying to get a little bit of accountability there and having them contribute to the park if they're the ones that are using, and that's important, so.
Any other questions from council members? We'll need a motion to approve the recommended 2018 recreation park rates.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the recommended 2008 recreation rentals and various fees.
Motion been made, is there a second? Made and seconded. Any other discussion on the recreation rates?
2018.
2018. Then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. And we thank you very much. Okay, the next item is presentation regarding proposed East Side Water Tower with engineering agreement and planning, loan agreement. Wayne Elliott and Nathan Pion from Aldridge &amp; Elliott Engineering are going to do the presentation. Gentlemen?
You have to say council. We are here for three things. One's the presentation, the other is the engineering service agreement and the amendment. So, we'll start off with the presentation. I don't know which one you want me to sort of direct to for the...
Oh, which one?
Yeah, which one? You got enough to go around?
Any, any, I'll just try to...
This is new to us, too.
Yeah, I'll do this one and try to stay out of the way, but the meeting for tonight is for the East Side Water Tower. We've been working on the preliminary engineering study with the city for water to service the east side of the city. This is just an aerial photo of the east side, and I'll just point out a few things. The yellow line here is the boundary between the city of Newport and the town of Derby. And then, also for existing infrastructure, you've got the Palan Hill reservoir, which currently services the low system within the city. And then, you have Route 105, Route 5, Derby Road going out. You've got the industrial park there, and then you've got other industries, commercial along Route 105. So, that's the service area that we'll be talking about tonight, known as the east side or referred to as the east side moving forward. Another figure from one of our reports for the East Side Water Tower service area, and again, you show the boundary between the city and the town of Derby. And there's a few other things that I'll come back to as I get through the presentation that we'll discuss. But really, getting into the background and history, as I'm sure the city council is very aware of, the interlocal agreement between the Village of Derby Center and the city of Newport to service the water system known as the east side. In 1999, there was a connection made between the city of Newport Water System and Village of Derby Center. The main purpose of that connection was to service the industrial park up on the east side, and there's other users that have serviced off of that. So, in 1999, the city constructed a 12-inch water line that goes from the boundary with Derby Center to the Palan Hill reservoir. There's a few other pieces of appurtenances that are installed along that way. There's a meter valve and then a flow control valve with other appurtenances, but that was all installed in 99 with city funds. In 1997, the city and Village of Derby Center entered into an interlocal agreement in regards to how water will be allocated, the fee structure, et cetera, before this project started. But starting in 2006, the Village of Derby Center changed the rate, the water rates for the east side, the water servicing the portion in the city of Newport, and they added a ready-to-serv fee that was new and changed the existing conditions of the interlocal agreement. In 2006, the city paid under protest because of the change to that interlocal agreement. And then, in 2008, the city worked with Aldridge &amp; Elliott to do a feasibility study to evaluate the existing service area in the east side and see if it was even feasible to service the east side with the city water system, adding new storage tanks, et cetera. That continued on. In 2009, the city filed a dispute against the village based on the change in the interlocal agreement. And then, 2006, the city initiated the preliminary engineering study that Aldridge &amp; Elliott are currently working on with the city. And as of a couple months ago, I believe, the city and village reached a resolution on the water dispute. So, for the purpose and need of the study and why we initiated this and the city asked us to evaluate it, goes back to the 97 interlocal agreement and the change that took effect in 2006, with the change in that rate structure with the ready-to-serv fee. Resolution in a sense absolves the dispute, but does not address all the concerns that the city has, and the city cannot add new connections without village approval, which is a concern from the city's standpoint with adding new connections, new water services along Route 105, where there's potential for development within the industrial park and then along Route 105 itself. The city would like to have control and authority over that without requesting connections and approval from the Village of Derby Center, and that's currently not feasible based on your current infrastructure. You can't be serviced off the Palan Hill reservoir just because of elevations and maintaining that static pressure. One other contingency or addition to this project is floating cover on the existing Palan Hill reservoir. It was installed in 1999 as part of the improvement project, and those floating covers are polypropylene material, and they've got about a 20-year life cycle or expected useful life, so we're approaching that here in the next two years. So, that's one of the items or deficiencies that had come into consideration when the Drinking Water, Groundwater Protection Division does their sanitary survey every three years, going through the water system, seeing what they have for concerns, deficiencies, et cetera. So, the proposed project, it's got four parts to it. One's the East Side Water Tower. We'll get into a little more detail on that momentarily. The booster pump station, which will be to move water from the existing Palan Hill reservoir up to the East Side Water Tower. Some modifications to the transmission main, obviously because water currently is flowing from the Village of Derby Center down towards the city. And that changed somewhat with booster pump station adding movement of the water and then the floating cover. I'm going to slide back a few slides and sort of talk about them, and we'll come back. But, so for the proposed water tower, we're looking at a new 450,000-gallon storage tank. It's located off to the south of Route 105. Reason it's there is just because of elevations. We need to maintain the static pressures, which I'll get into in a little more detail. But we're really looking to maintain the highest ground elevation that we can, and obviously, a lot of the area that's currently within the city limits are pretty flat through there, so we need to look for that highest piece of real estate that we can find. The existing Palan Hill reservoir is located here. That's got the floating cover. That'll be a part of the proposed project. And then, a booster pump station, we're locating that preliminary location, would be adjacent to the existing Palan Hill reservoir to pump water from the reservoir up to the new water tower. And then, as I mentioned, modifications to the existing 12-inch transmission main. The 12-inch ductal iron was installed in 99, it's in good condition, and we'd like to reuse that rather than adding more cost to a project. Flip back here for a second. So, as I mentioned, the new East Side Water Tower, 450,000 gallons. The dimensions of it is sort of a tall standpipe, 25 feet in diameter, 120 feet high. Reasons for the volume of it, you're looking at maintaining, well, domestic demand, so supplying what the water needs are of the distribution system on the east side, as well as maintaining fire flow. So, meeting your ISO, providing ability to fight a fire in that area. So, we sized it based on domestic demand of 100,000 gallons to meet the average day. That includes the industrial park, includes some potential growth in that area. Obviously, you don't want to build this tank. It's not a five, 10-year project, it's a 30, 50-year project. So, want to account for that future demand in this service area, and then your fire flow, based on the water supply rules, you need to maintain at least 2,500 gallons per minute for two hours is what we evaluated for the fire storage. So, that equates to 450,000 gallons of storage within this standpipe. We looked at evaluating some of the materials. Concrete's not an option just based on the dimensions of this tank, so you're looking at either a steel, welded steel tank or a glass-fused steel tank. Glass-fused steel offers more longevity, lesser operation and maintenance costs, as there's less repair moving forward over the life of the tank, minimal operation and maintenance costs other than your routine inspections, just to make sure everything looks decent inside the tank, and then also replacing some annodes for corrosion control. And then, one part of the, one additional part of the storage tank was adding in a mixing system, so you didn't have this large volume of water just sitting up there. As it fills, the water would circulate, it would create some movement and also prevent freezing during the winter, as we all know, winter can be cold up in the northeast kingdom. We wanted to create some circulation so that water didn't freeze in that storage tank. The booster pump station, it's a duplex booster pump station, looking to move water from Palan Hill reservoir up to the East Side Water Tower, just to meet domestic demands, just to fill that tank on a daily basis based off the draw from the users in the east side. The transmission main, we're looking to reuse the existing ductal iron main, installed in 1999, it's in good condition. This would eliminate the connection between the Village of Derby Center and the city of Newport. There'd be some length of new pipe connecting from the existing transmission main to where the proposed water tower would be. There's approximately 1,000 feet of new 12-inch ductal iron that it would take to connect the two dots. And then, we look at adding a pressure-reducing valve and flow valve built in contingency to move water from this new service area down into the lower zone of the city, in a way it wouldn't just serve the east side, it would have beneficial use in the lower city, lower portion of the water distribution system. And then, the Palan Hill reservoir cover, and as I mentioned, it's got a 20-year life cycle, it's approaching that, it's about 18 years old now, and identified in the sanitary survey, it would be replaced as part of this project. Construction costs, we broke it up into three parts based on consideration on what would be advantageous for a bidding climate, getting general contractors. The storage tank is a specialty item, it's not something that anyone in the area can construct. There's only a couple manufacturers that can provide the glass-fused steel, so we separated that out into its own construction project. But the transmission main, estimated construction cost is about $230,000 with the storage tank and the booster pump station, it's approximately $1.78 million, and then the floating cover, which would be a small purchase, is $200,000. So, the total construction cost for this project to service the east side of the Newport City Water System independently, separate from the Village of Derby Center, would be about $2.21 million total construction cost. Total project cost, this includes construction, a 10% construction contingency. Total project cost, this includes construction, a 10% construction contingency, all engineering fees, and then other costs, sort of the soft costs, administration, legal, fiscal, land acquisition, permit fees, short-term interest, all that's included in this total project cost. Total project cost would be $3 million, which would be the recommended bond amount. Available funding sources, we evaluated two. There's the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund through the state of Vermont. Long terms are 20 to 30 years. In this case, it would be like the end 30-year loan with interest rates ranging from negative three to 3%. Can't give you a firm number on what the interest rate would be to date. Needs to do some more additional information based on water user rates. Debt retirement is an equation that goes through, but I would say you're not looking at that 3%. You're on the downside of that. And then you wouldn't start repaying that loan until two years after substantial completion. So once you have beneficial use of that system is when the payments would start. We also evaluated the USDA Rule Development Program. They have terms that go up 40 years. The interest rate's 2.75, but they also do grant awards, about 20 to 30% is what's typically been seen. The only sort of kicker contingency on that is you need a system, a water system that's fully metered. And you're currently not fully metered. You're working towards that. So they would need to have that, the fully metered system complete before construction started. So that's the kicker there that sort of moves that one into the background of potential funding sources. Project schedule, and this is just preliminary for discussion purposes, but I would like to discuss beginning of preliminary design in September, working towards a bond vote in November, and then completing the final design over this winter, starting in November, and aiming for early construction in the spring of 2018. In order to meet that construction window, getting it out first of the year where you see the most advantageous, cost-competitive pricing from general contractors, you really need to have it out in a margin timeframe. So in order to meet that, we need to start final design, preliminary design this fall. With that, we'd start construction on the transmission main portion around May. We're through the small purchase of the floating cover at the same time. And then, once the transmission main is complete, bring in the tank manufacturer to construct the water tower. And that would be extend out to about November 2018. And you'd be under a one-year warranty period. So any defects, issues that arise, the general contractor come address those. And then you would start paying on it the following year after that one-year warranty period. So 2020, November. Questions? I know I went through, I'm sure there's a lot of discussion amongst the city council, but I'm hoping and ready to answer what you may have. And I can flip back to slides if you have them.
Any questions from council members?
Yeah, I have a question on the floating cover.
Yep.
I thought the state didn't really like those anymore. And ours is reaching its death date or whatever.
Yep.
But part of the bond vote would be the floating cover.
Correct.
Do we know the state's going to approve the floating cover?
I have had discussions with the state. When you look at it from a cost-benefit analysis, the only alternative to not replacing the cover and to meet their requirements would be to install a new storage tank, which isn't cost-effective for the pricing of the floating cover. And we've had discussions with them and they're acceptable to just replacing that floating cover to meet the needs of the system.
Do we actually have the spot picked out where we're going to put this tower?
Uh, we're still working through that. There's been preliminary discussions with one of the property owners, which is the preferred location, and that's ongoing.
Which town do you sell it in?
Yeah.
Go ahead, just want to be sure. Mr. Snell? Earlier you mentioned about the utilities. They're all going to be underground from the tower to Route 105, right?
Yep, so it'll be new underground electric going from, you know, the East Coast power pole up to the tank. It'll all be buried, you know, underground electric probably about three feet. And then the existing water mains, they'll be cross-country, it won't be under roadways, but it'll be a minimum of five and a half feet deep up to the storage tank. And then it would come up through the foundation of the storage tank.
The USDA funding, so we're not even eligible to apply for any of their grants because we're not metered.
Not metered. What they would require is you'd even, and I haven't had this full discussion, but there would need to be some assurance that the system is fully metered by the time you went out to construction. Or by the end of construction.
They haven't changed that from years ago when we looked at using those funds.
We guess we'll do that new water center because they aren't metered also as part of the project. They're going to get the funding offer, they had to agree to the meters and it's part of the project.
Okay. All right. Us working towards it doesn't count yet?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. All right. Other kind of questions, council members then?
Well, this is kind of, so the interest rate on the state of Vermont revolving loan, what do you mean minus three?
Yeah, that's the question I had. How do you get a negative interest rate?
3% or?
No, I would say realistically, you're looking closer to that negative three. And what the negative three is, it's essentially a grant is what it is.
Oh, okay.
So they just don't call it a grant. We call it a subsidy, subsidy essentially.
In your mind, it's the last state to have negative interest rates. And they hadn't figured out how to change that, so they were going to get rid of that a year or two ago, but they're still working on that. But as Nate said, if you can get in a negative 3%, it's equivalent to about a 30, 35% grant. So if you borrow a million dollars, you're only going to pay back, you know, roughly two-thirds of that, so.
But we, no matter what, we would have to bond for the 3 million.
That's correct.
But that doesn't, that doesn't preclude us from applying for like northern borders or some of these other grant funding that's not tied to water meters.
You'd want to bond for the full $3 million. That way you don't leave yourself short, but you would, you could still explore other avenues to find additional grant money. And by the time you pass the bond vote, you could have a more defined interest rate. And that's part of the, you know, not the next step tonight, but moving forward, if you move through to the final design, you get some of that financial information in based on the water system. And the Drinking Water SRF program can dial in what the interest rate would be. They look out, you know, next five years, see what, if you have any debt retirement that falls off, they look at it more than just in that one month window or one-year window.
Okay. I was just curious on that.
I have one last question. I know where you're looking at to put this tower up, with all the planets in the world. What if we can't get that and we had to go back to the property that we purchased for that? How much more is that going to add to this cost? Because we're actually going to be bringing it a little bit further.
Yep.
I mean, is it a good question to ask?
No, I think it's a good question. I would say I don't have the exact number, but I don't think it would be very far off from that 3 million. I think you're sort of cutting, you know, cutting hairs a little bit if you go this way or that way. I would say all of them are within close proximity to each other.
Okay.
Also, also part of that, we have a 10% construction contingency. And generally, when we go out today, the state means, sure, we carry 5%. So there's a buffer of about 5% if something like that comes up, just so you get a little bit of flexibility.
And another question, Act 250, is this major, minor, medium?
It's going to be a full application. Use that word loosely because even a small application is a full application in Act 250. But it will require Act 250 application and then it'll be up to the Act 250 district to determine if it requires a public, a public hearing, et cetera.
Okay. So just again.
Depending on the piece of property, it could be amended to an existing permit too. But either way, the application process is pretty similar.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. So you saw, you mentioned the techno, the technology was called glass-fused steel.
Yep.
Is that right? Is that, how, I'm just curious about that, because our next agenda item is maintaining our painted steel frame. Is that, you said there's a significant reduction in maintenance and that kind of thing?
Yep. So what happens, just to explain glass-fused steel, the glass is actually on the inside. So they've got, you know, plants out in, I don't know, called Midwest where they manufacture these panels. They're about seven feet tall and eight feet wide. And what it is, is you've got a glass surface on the inside, so there's no corrosion that can happen on the inside, the side that's in contact with the water. And on the outside is the steel. So, you know, painted in shop paint. Only thing is, that you need to be concerned of is just the annodes that sort of take the corrosion. Those need to be replaced every 10 years or so.
I was fairly curious, if this, our other water tower isn't that, isn't that old, but is this a relatively, do you know if there are fused glass tanks that have reached their full lifetime? Is this a proved-in-the-field, like, full-time, low-maintenance technology?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you. I know it's a proven technology, but I don't know if there's been one that's gone its full 30, 50 years. I'm sure there's.
Comprehensive testing, but perhaps not. But all, all looking positive, but.
There definitely, those types of tanks of Vermont that have been out there in service for probably 25 years, just the technology. It's actually very similar. If you drive around the farms, you see the silos, blue silos. It's not quite the same company, but a similar, similar technology.
Yeah, I know, I spoke with the rep. The former city manager, I haven't been at a conference, who was speaking about these glass-lined towers because we had just gotten done painting for the repainting and the removal of the paint from this existing tower, as we were curious about the new tower. It definitely sounds like it's a lot less maintenance. Council other questions from council members? Robin?
May I do two questions so I don't forget the other one? So one of them is, where is this property that you're looking at? I took the map, but I couldn't really figure out.
So there's no firm property yet. It's more just general discussion and working through, the city's been in correspondence with some of them, but it would be on the south side of Route 105.
So can you just point out a couple of streets so I can describe what we're looking at there? Where, you know, so you want to know?
I can give you, I don't know the street names, I apologize, but I can at least give you some.
Well, yeah, I can't.
That's Crawford, that's the Church of God.
Okay.
That's Derby Road. Where are we on Derby Road?
Yeah.
That's the tavern on the.
Tavern on the.
Tavern, taverns here. Yeah, that's the tavern. So it's in the general woods behind the tavern.
So it's still near where the, that property that the council bought a while ago, which is sort of over farther maybe? Okay. So it is the same. All right, thank you. And then second question is, have you priced out the impact on the user? Has that been done yet?
That's part of the next step, is we finalize this preliminary engineering report.
Yes. Oh, let Joe go first. Okay. Go ahead, Joe. I was pointing the end behind you, but go ahead.
I can watch.
Go ahead.
I have two questions. I assume the 3 million does not include the average maintenance cost per year of this facility, is that correct?
Yes, is that just construction costs?
Okay. And if you compared, therefore, the cost of this project plus its annual cost to how much it would cost us to just keep getting water from Derby? Or is that not an option anymore?
I haven't done those costs to answer your first part of the question. I haven't evaluated that, but I think that's more of a city council decision. It's more political, not just the engineering side of things.
I have two. One's easy, which is, just to be clear, the pieces that you're looking at right now are in Newport?
Uh, it's mixed.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the question was easy, the answer not. The other thing is, do you have, and I know it depends on a lot of things, but do you have a range of expected annual payback costs?
It would be based off the interest rate for the Drinking Water SRF. I can't rattle those off off the top of my head, but it can be calculated and will be part of the preliminary engineering report.
Tonight was just to give the council a brief project update. As we move forward, they choose to move forward, all that information will be available on the loan payments, the interest rate, the effect on the water rates, that initial will be available.
And that's a good point.
Chief, did you have?
I have two questions, the first of which is during the construction phase, would be any anticipated traffic issues?
Traffic issues, no. Most of the, most of it will be outside of the roadway, other than some minor modifications. And that'll be, I'd say, minimal impact to the traffic. There might be need for a blue light for a day and or two, but not as if you're going to see excavators along Route 105 for months on end.
And the second one is, as far as security is concerned for the site, is your construction cost taking into account any like arc-lair fencing, security cameras, things like that?
Yeah, fencing's including in there, you know, means to keep individuals out, you know, security, that's going to be a further discussion on whether there's cameras, et cetera. There's some contingencies built in there, but not completely flushed out.
Thank you. So meaning this whole thing includes a skater, a skater or whatever, you could access remotely, all the information?
Yep, there's a cost built in there so that there's a new skater system tying to existing water system skater, so you could tell how much water is in the tank, whether booster pump one, booster pump two in the booster pump buildings operating. That's all built into the cost, so.
Yeah, so if you're going for a vote in November, and we're in the middle of September, you have a 40-day warning period, you're not going to be voting in the beginning of November if you don't have all the information together on the cost per user and some of the other things that. So you're waiting for them to say yes and then do the rest of the work, is that the?
Yeah, I mean, that's stuff we've worked towards, but it wasn't part of the presentation tonight. That'll be, you know, if the city council moves forward with this project and just determines to do a bond vote in November, all that'll be a part of the public informational hearing for the bond votes. Tend to be talked about to, public informational hearings. And obviously, cost for the user will be included in that discussion.
Other questions?
I would point out, this is going to be on our next several meetings, our city council meetings. I did a rough schedule working with Annie. And just so folks know, if they want information about this, if all goes well tonight, the bond documents will be available at our next meeting. The first hearing that is not required, but we want to have it so folks are aware, would take place on October 16th. And then the required public hearing would be on October 30th, moving towards a vote on November 7th. So we've got that laid out and our intent is to bring as much information to the public as possible.
The one thing that I see with this tower is potentially it's going to help with some of the economic development on the east side of Newport. You've got the old Palan farm, which is 120 acres of both residential and commercial property. You've still got more expansion in the industrial park. We already have one business that needs to expand because they have development ideas. I mean, they need more, actually applied for a permit and it's been held up because of the water issue. And so I see this as a win-win positive for the long-term, for long-term, part of the long-term future of the community, is the way I look at it.
It certainly allows the city to control its destiny. And I think that's really important, to have that local authority over how the city wants to grow.
Other questions from anyone? Then, thank you for the presentation. Very good.
Thank you. So we'll get into the second, third parts of why we're here. The city council decides to move this project forward. There's a few steps that need to be initiated this fall in order to stay on schedule with constructing this next spring. One is the planning loan amendment to the Drinking Water SRF. I don't know if topics were provided, but two right there, we can just. I don't know if copies were provided, but two right there we can discuss. Drinking water SRF loan, you've currently got one out, step one loan. So, it's a planning study for the preliminary engineering study that you're currently working with us on. We've talked with the state and we can do an amendment to this planning loan application for the step one to further develop the preliminary design. So, that total is included in there. It is, this amount, $62,400. And that includes the preliminary design, subsurface and geotechnical investigation to see what the soils are like underneath as there's going to be a large volume of water on a small parcel of land. Special services, which would be bond vote assistance and easement assistance to work with the property owners that we have as preliminary locations for the storage tank in the transmission main. And then, legal fees, working with your bond counsel for the bond vote assistance for the new storage tank. So, that's what the $62,400 includes for that. And before we go into further detail on whether the city council motions to approve this, we've got a copy, as we do all have a draft copy of the engineering service agreement. And I just wanted to step through what's included in each of those tasks for the amendment. We've got a draft copy. The preliminary design, obviously, it's a short turnaround to get this project constructed for the spring startups. We want to try and start some of the field work now while the weather is still good, rather than wait until after the bond vote in November. Who knows how long after that snow will be here or even before that. So, the preliminary design, it includes a five days of survey, bringing your field team out, doing a topographical survey, see what the existing conditions are, looking up infrastructure within Route 105, edge of road, and then working out to the proposed storage tank site once a preliminary agreement, at least a verbal on interest or move forward from that property owner has received. Also do one day field edits to verify what we picked up in the field with our field survey. And then, we'll bring those survey points into our computer system, into our CAD drawings, and develop preliminary plans just to show what the existing conditions are and start working towards developing those plans in an effort. So, if the bond vote does pass, we're ready to move forward with the final design shortly thereafter.
And to kind of reiterate why the schedule's important is that if we don't get the field work done, if we wait until November and don't start anything at that point, we have an early winter, we don't really have quite enough time to get up and get all the field work done before it supplies. If we don't do that, that's going to make it difficult for us to get through the permitting and get this ready for bid in the spring. And more so even in past years, we found out if any of the projects that we had and others had this year, if they weren't out on the street by April, the prices started to creep up, you know, 10, 15, 20 percent pretty quickly as we got into the summer. So, and then, if you lose a whole construction season, you're looking at things going up, you know, that 3 percent, you know, over into 2019, you're that farther ahead from being able to improve the water connections and everything else. So...
And then, as part of the preliminary design is the initial 30 percent review meeting just to discuss the plans, the layout, et cetera, of the proposed project. The second part of it is the subsurface and geotechnical investigation. We're going to have new access drive up to the storage tank, new water lines. We want to do some probes to see what are the surface soil conditions? Is there any ledge out there that we're going to hit? And is going to restrict us getting that five and a half feet to six feet of burial over the pipe? And then, we've got two days accounted for in subsurface investigation, which is just at the tank site, doing some deeper probes, some sieve analysis to evaluate what the soil conditions are, how much load they can handle, especially taking into account the storage tank and the foundation, the footprint of it. Special services, it's too far.
Yeah, one of the reasons for that is one of the sites that we're looking at, there's some concerns about the adjacent embankment, the stability of that. So, it's a pretty small piece of land and we want to make sure, like, putting this tank and all that weight on there, that that's not going to be an issue on the structural standpoint. So, that's something we want to do before we get too far into identifying the exact piece of land.
Special services, bond vote assistance. So, assisting with development, working with the bond counsel on the bond vote warning, the resolution, preparing a bond vote schedule, an informational flyer, responding to questions and then preparing and attending up to two public hearings, daily questions that the public may have of the project. And then, easement assistance would be assisting with, working with some of the property owners to answer questions they may have, providing sieves and then coordinating with legal counsel on working through the easement language.
And the state is the funding authority is going to require that there be an auction agreement before we get too far with the property for our site. So, that's something that we're going to jump into pretty quickly just to make sure you're locked in and, you know, everything's a party to upfront.
Any questions on the engineering service agreement or the amendment?
I figured out the extra $10,000 was for legal.
Yes.
I was trying to grab 52.4 here and then 62.4 here, and then I saw the $10,000 for legal.
So, yes.
Because it sort of involved legal for easements.
Exactly, right. So, that's going to allow you to get reimbursed through this program for the money you've spent for legal fees, for the bond vote assistance, anything for easements. You aren't an option for an agreement.
Questions from council members?
Does that vote have to be on the road cell? Is that a draw at that date?
It's not. In Vermont, we're fortunate, you know, it can be done at any time. You know, typically, as you know, they're really, in some places, there isn't anything going on in November this year. Some places there are, but typically later, you know, November, obviously down the day.
Did you tell you during November, the election's original?
No, it's not.
The 62.4, that is part of your 2977, right?
Yes, the $3 million.
Where does it fit in here?
Fits into, part of it's the step one engineering, which includes 52.4 and then also the 13.9, which is for the study that we're currently doing. And then, there's the legal, we hold 25, and 10 of that is held within the 62.4.
So, $10,000 of this is...
Accounted for, yep. So, you know, part of, as we, the project move forward after the bond vote, there'll be additional legal discussions, you know, working with other soft costs, admin, et cetera. So, rolling of the 25, currently only $10,000 is included in this amendment. Yep.
And it's up to that, basically, the city's just going to submit reimbursement on a monthly basis for whatever you spend. So, for example, if you get to the bond vote and it doesn't pass and you guys want to kind of step back and regroup, you know, you're only into whatever you've spent at that point. So, and then you can kind of take a look at and see if you want to do a second vote or, you know, go in a different direction. So, you have that option.
Any other questions? So, we're looking for a vote on this contract here.
Yeah, we're looking for, is that the only vote that the city...
This is for the contract...
Dick issued back to the two. Probably want to make one on the engineering service contract with Aldridge and Elliott and then also to approve...
The state revolving loan.
Yep, to execute.
Okay. So, first, we'll identify a motion on the contract with Aldridge and Elliott for project number 17079 in the amount of $52,400.
Mr. Mayor, so moved?
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded, discussion?
52?
$52,400.
With the extra 10 for legal?
That'll be on this one, yeah.
That'll come later.
Yeah. This is just for Aldridge and Elliott?
Yeah.
No, right. So, a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion on this motion? And then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
There's two copies here.
And those will I have to sign?
On the second page.
Right there, okay. You want to witness it, Mr. Johnson? Witness to signature?
One copy in the city council?
Yeah. We're going to let Laura have the second one.
So, Laura, we'll have to sign a copy, executed, we'll send that home to the state tomorrow.
Okay, now, we'll need a motion to approve the state revolving loan program. This is an amendment?
The amendment, yeah.
And that is for the total amount of $62,400. So, we would need a motion for that.
George, you know?
It's for $62,400. It's adding the $10,000 for the legal fees. So, we need a motion to approve that.
The application to apply?
It's the application.
What's the verb here?
It's the amendment to the...
It's the amendment.
Planning a loan application.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion, please.
So, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'm sorry?
Made and seconded, discussion on that motion? And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Now, is it something, do I sign this or do you have...
Some more of the authorized representatives.
On that one? You might be the authorized, you might be the only city manager on that one.
Just on the third page there, just to sign your signature.
Is the page? Which one is that? Oh. So, Laura, we will need a copy of this document. I somehow got missed in that packet. Number 124.
I need a copy of this one, sorry.
Yep, I can scan and email you that in the morning. There's another one floating around. Want to have a hard copy?
Can I take that one?
Yep.
So, you have an original?
Yep.
You have an original?
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time coming over.
Don't get unplugged, you'll lose your device via Twitter. Okay, the next, moving on.
Thank you very much for the time.
Nah, you should just have, I think you just had to plug it. Yeah, it's Windows 10. I think you just, you just want to plug it in. Yeah.
A little sad.
It's a little sad. You hear it a little bit. Okay, next item. West side water tower maintenance recommendation. Tom, burn here? Set us a note on this. We have, this is the, based upon the presentation from Suaz. Is it Suaz?
Suaz.
As in Suaz.
Well, since I've been with the city of Newport, it was a long battle just to get the original painting that was done back in 2002. So, now, here we are, 15 years later. Again, it'll be another battle to, we've been putting money aside. I shouldn't say we haven't. We have been putting money aside in the sinking fund. But the gentleman that came up from Suaz and had his presentation talked about taking us out to 15 years, which would cover us with the current needs right now. There are some repairs that need to be done right now, some touch-up paint. It would cover all our, all the maintenance of the tower, inspections, they inspected every year. Cover us for the state of Vermont. And it would take us up to that 15-year mark. It is a big number, but if you look back at what it cost us 15 years ago to paint the tower, which was the exterior, the dry interior and then the wet interior of the tower, I don't think their numbers are too far off.
And what's nice that I see from this is we have fixed numbers for the budget because he said that these numbers wouldn't change. These are fixed numbers for the next 15, 15 years. What do we have in that sinking fund right now?
I knew you were going to ask that. I can't tell you.
I asked you a while back. I think it was a height of 900. It was kind of 210,000.
I can't tell you the exact number. Look at it every day.
We tried to put $15,000 in each year, so probably those are 290.
I didn't know, tell you.
No, no, just around, so, around 190? And that's what you would use to finance?
Well, we'd certainly be covering year one easily.
The last one I was...
Right.
I was going to cover year one, year two.
Right.
About three years of life payments.
Right. It's up right now, yeah. Council members?
What do you expect would be, like expectancy of that tower is going to be? None of the teeth and whatever. How are we set here?
Personally, I couldn't answer that. But, you know, I did write some of the history down of the tower. It was erected back in 1973. Structurally, it's sound. We just got the report back from them and it's the same, it's a sub-company of Suaz that has always done the inspections and cleanings when they're gone. The tower is structurally sound. But we, and as he had his presentation, if you don't take care of the maintenance and upkeep the paint on it, now you're going to have, you're going to have issues with it.
There are no interior gridders or any repair?
There, just as he, as he spoke during that presentation and in the report, there are some sections that are showing some, not for teeth, but just the paints failing. That would be, need to be addressed.
But structurally, it seems to be okay.
Structurally, the structure is sound.
And this includes, what was I going to say? It does include the annual maintenance that you have to do for the, not maintenance for the space. We have to inspect it every year for the state, right?
No.
No.
But they will inspect it every year.
They will.
Clean as needed.
Cleaning, okay. And then, in year 11, they're talking about a new, must be painting for the outsides, this exterior overcoat. That must be, okay.
That's the timeline. We know what the contractor does. We have towers and stuff on top. That stuff would have to go. He said they have to do the entire coating.
We're not sure of that, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what he told us.
Yeah, he wasn't happy that that was up on top of the tower.
Well, we didn't know at the time.
No, we didn't know it at the time. Because back then, everything was so, it's great to have those cell towers on top of existing structures. And plus, we saw a revenue source. Close that bridge on the outside, yes.
Tom, are there any competitors for Suarez who could do the same kind of work and give us a different kind of bid? Just asking.
Yes, I'm sure there are. Did we look at that avenue? I did not. This company's been maintaining our tower since day one. They're a reputable company. And we just, we decided to skip with it.
And they drew the nine or fifteen towers for Burlington.
Another shame of the water industry. This is what, what on that, right?
Yeah.
First of all, just a comment. I am all for on infrastructure maintenance on a regular basis. I think it's the only way that the city can keep our infrastructure needs maintained and without exorbitant costs in the end. But I have two questions, and I apologize if this has already been asked. But in the contract, first thing, in the contract, does that include the maintenance they're going to be doing? Are we going to be paying extra for the maintenance as things go along? And the second thing is, I keep hearing that the last maintenance on that was fifteen years ago. But I lived there at almost the base of the water tower. And I've only lived there eleven years. And something, painting, cleaning, there was some maintenance under that tower in the last ten years since I moved in. So I would just like to know how long that's been?
The contract would cover everything. Any structural problem with the tower, any cleaning, any painting, inspections. It would cover all of it. As far as anything done to the tower, we had tried pressure washing or cleaning it a few years back. It was us.
Probably at the same time that they installed those towers on top.
No, it was prior to that.
All right. Anything else on this? Then we would need a motion if you so choose to enter into this contract. At least, it's a nice, it's a fixed cost that we know. Basically, the sinking fund will cover at least the first year and possibly the second year. What about the grants? Usually, grants don't cover this stuff. Not maintenance, not usually maintenance. Grants are usually for like new infrastructure. Yeah. That's what, what you say? Grants wouldn't cover this, no. Because that's the, grants are for new infrastructure such as the other. So. Yes. So we need a motion if you so choose this? Yeah, I want a motion. I'm going to go ahead and put you with us. With the contract price that has been provided in the council. So a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Made and seconded. Discussion? Yes.
Is there a way out if we find that we're not satisfied in the second year with what they're doing?
Yes. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Wait. Yes, we'll sing you again. So this is two of them here. And this item is water sewer allocation request on Broadview Street.
Yes.
The paperwork has been filled out. It appears to be completely filled out. We received payment?
Yes.
We received the fees? And the request, the first one is for wastewater and the desired flow is two hundred and ten gallons per day. They paid the thirty-dollar application fee. Did you go through and correct? Was that why there's a check in that?
Yeah, yes. He, yeah, he crossed that, and that's not, that's not appropriate.
Okay. Oh.
So he paid the-
Oh, yeah, because it's a house, so it's going to be domestic. I can't think of it.
Yeah.
Right.
So he paid the application fee plus the twelve cents a gallon, the two hundred and ten gallons.
And we have plenty of, um-
Yes.
Allocation of the wastewater plant to allow this.
Yeah.
That's correct, the red, yeah, the one I'm signing. Yeah, on, this other one in red.
Just a second. No, this is the correct. You checked off the wrong.
How's that? So we would, and then the other one is for the actual water allocation, which is up to four hundred and fifty gallons per day.
That's, that's what the state's been requesting.
So you, two hundred and ten?
Yeah. I don't, don't ask. I don't know. That's not the state, if they go to the state, they're going to have them put four hundred and fifty gallons here. I have no idea. I'm sure they're already do, use the two ten. That's something new the state's come up with.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council members on this?
Have we gotten a fee on that one?
We've gotten the fee on both of them.
Yeah, they both would pay.
So the fifty dollars and thirty dollars.
Yeah.
We would need a motion to approve this. We have the allocations available.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make that motion?
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Made and seconded. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is to set the two thousand seventeen-
Set that down to four.
Set the two thousand seventeen eighteen tax rate. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I've got the memos handed out. Sorry, I didn't get them to you before, but I just got them. Didn't get to it.
Could I have a copy?
Yeah. So municipal rate is going, first, the budget, the tax rate would be based on the grand list of three hundred and nineteen million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. That's what the grand list adds build. And based on that, your tax rate this year is going from one, municipal rate is going from one dollar seventeen point nine seven to a dollar eighteen point nine two. It's going up about a penny. Procreations is going from basically five cents down to point zero five seven six to point zero four nine seven. The voter exempt is going from point zero one four eight to point zero one two seven. Resident education rate, last year was a dollar sixty-one point three two. This year is a dollar thirty-five point two eight. So your total residential rate last year was two dollars and eighty-six point five three cents. And this year it can be two dollars and sixty cents, sixty point four four cents. Go down to the non-resident, the education rate last year was a dollar seventy-four point eight seven. This year it's a dollar forty-six point two five. So the non-resident rate is going from three dollars point zero 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 eight to two dollars and seventy-two point four one cents. There it is.
Questions from council members? This is what it has to be?
Yeah, it is what it is. Can't change it.
So we need a motion on this? I'll have a motion first, then I'll call one here.
This is to, this is to approve the recommendations, not to accept or-
No, you have, well, you have to approve. This is what it's going to be.
That's what it's going to be.
That's what it's going to be.
Because what we did earlier was based on, what, three hundred and five million?
Right.
And it was like two or four.
Three hundred and fifteen.
Three hundred and fifteen.
Yeah. So we're down by another two and a half cents of what it was.
Yeah. So we would need a motion and a second on this.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to accept the proposed tax rates for today's meeting.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Made and seconded. Discussion from, yeah, discussion with council members? Yes.
Yes, I recall a newspaper article that said that after we were reassessed, that the total grand list was three hundred ninety-nine million dollars. And then, of course, there was a small decrease when you had your informal hearing with the original assessor. And so I know the amount must have come down from the three hundred and ninety-nine million. But, but, and I know that there are appeals that will be taking place in the future because of various people that were dissatisfied. But after the reevaluate, well, A, was the original number that the grand list was at after reassessment initially, three hundred and ninety-nine million dollars. And after the reevaluation, the informal reevaluation, what is the total grand list now before the second appeal process starts? Because I think that this grand list, that number that you have is too, is too small. And therefore, if this number should really be something like three hundred and sixty million, then the tax rate should be much lower because the voters only approved a budget increase of a certain amount of money. And that's what we voted for. So what is, what was the original grand list number after reassessment? What was it after the informal review?
Well, I did see a memo from Spencer that it was three hundred and ninety-nine million. And why it is lower now, you'll have to ask him. I don't know.
Well, I know that the rates did not come down from three hundred and ninety-nine million on the informal-
The non-taxable.
I suspect it's got something to do with this over here and the Bogner property on the thing. I think those properties came, came out because they're not working, there's nothing going on. I think you had built in three ninety-nine if this had been built and that had gone through. You'd have all this property worth huge amounts of money. Well, it's not happening. So we lowered that. And then you went through the grievance process and lowered it even more. And I think that's where we're at.
Did that not include the total grand list, not include the non-taxable? I think that was part of the original number that came out.
This number is the as-billed grand list right here.
I'm sorry, this is as-billed. What does that mean, as-billed?
That means your tax bill is going to get, you're going to get billed based on three hundred and nineteen million.
Yeah, but where did the three hundred and nineteen come from when we started at three ninety-nine?
You're asking the wrong person, and I'm not the assessor.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we're going to, we're going to pay for it.
It can't be changed now.
Can that, can that be repeated? That the three ninety-nine included non-taxable properties?
Because you remember that was the total grand list.
Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's what, I'm not the assessor, but that was my, that was my impression, was he published the total grand list as it came in after reappraisal. Right? But he included all the non-taxable, such as the prison, the city of property. That's what, I was under the impression, and that this does not include any of those, because this is what's billed to taxpayers. Because you don't tax the high school, you don't tax the hospital. But that's all part of your grand list number.
There you go. He had all the non-taxable property there.
Yeah, and that's, and you take out all the non-taxables, it drops it down.
You're saying there's eighty million dollars of non-taxables?
The prison's worth about twenty million. You look at the high school, the hospital, the elementary school, all the, all the churches, the state building, the court system. You value that. That's about eighty million.
About twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent of our grand list is non-taxable.
Yeah. Seventy non-taxable properties you came up with. So that's the difference.
That's what it is in there. Now, this does reflect Laura, he did on the grievance process, the first one. Okay? This is what's going to be built. So your tax, all these people are in appeals right now. They're going to get a tax bill based on this number. If they go down, they'll get a credit on the May payment or next year's or whatever.
Yes.
So I'd just like, Laura, Grand Newport City, I'd just like to make a statement. The assessment on my house went up twenty-five percent. And if these numbers are correct, I will be paying eight hundred and eighty-five dollars more in taxes next year. And that is unacceptable. That takes me over five thousand dollars a year in taxes on my house. Unacceptable.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, I'll just, I think this is the easy one. What are, what are tax bills due?
Tax bills will be due in November.
What?
First payment is due November fifteenth. Second payment is due May fifteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Like I said, we're going to get the tax bill based on, before the grievances or after the first round of grievances, before the appeals. And if the people's tax assessment gets lowered, then they'll get a credit on the, they'll try to get the credit for the May payment. Or they got a choice, they can tack it on the next year or they can get a refund.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on. New business. Mr. Johnson?
No, only that the water civil authority stacks here appeal process Wednesday night, six o'clock. And there are ninety-five appeals. We'll be doing that until the middle of February. Sorry.
Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
I don't have any.
Mr. Wilson?
I don't either.
I don't have anything. Mr. Shenandoah?
Church, United Church Chicken Pie Supper is Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday. Uh, there's four and six thirty. Well-was community event and delicious.
Oh, my, delicious.
Did you say dish Saturday?
Dish Saturday.
Because momma better bake some pie.
Yeah.
Okay.
So all the kind pie bakers, please get the name.
Any new business, Laura?
I was, just to mention what I mentioned during the public comment period, which is I'm delighted to announce that NCIC and Preservation Trust have pooled their resources to fund the hotel feasibility study. That was one of the resources that came out from the meeting held a week or so ago. Absolutely delighted about that.
Anything?
New business, I hesitate to announce this, given the conversation about setting the tax rate. But we're getting ready to launch our second required tax sale process. Our charter requires, we have two here. And we're coming into that timeframe. So letting folks know, there'll still be a couple of weeks before they get their first letter. We'll make one more staff and let folks know that it's the last monthly billing they'll get before they hear from me tomorrow. You have to go through that. That's all I have.
All right.
Yes, just to highlight the glory of it. Do you know the amount that NCIC and Preservation Trust are contributing?
The numbers are sixty-five percent from NCIC and the thirty-five percent from Preservation- The numbers are sixty-five percent from NCIC and the thirty-five percent from Preservation Trust. We're anticipating the total not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Thank you.
And Preservation Trust also agreed to pay for the reappraisal?
Yes, they did.
Of that property?
Yes, they did.
Old business, Mr. Johnson? No, Mr. Wilson? I don't have anything. Mr. Shenandoah?
I feel like I should mention, a few meetings back, we submitted an application for the Waterside Association for the High Meadows Fund. That was, was a, was a great opportunity, and I think we heard that it, we got the, they were mentioning they'd gotten preliminary approval for that funding to begin a stormwater, a district stormwater plan, which is a, would be a great step forward. It's been formally accepted, and the money is in hand, that's all, that we're all going positively. So that's, with the city approval, this organization is doing good work.
That's the partnership to come up with the whole plan.
Exactly, yeah. So that's, that's an exciting step forward, and the Waterside Association is grateful to the city's support.
What was the size of the grant?
It was in, I can't remember exactly, it was in the fifty thousand dollar range?
No.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
We have twenty thousand on that.
I would like to use version one.
Okay. I was approximate.
We like, like, be a little more worshipful. We are hoping for some other grants in that case.
But good money follows good, and this is a good first step.
Okay. Anything else?
I have a meeting coming up. The second meeting of the NVDA traffic study will be noticed for, it's Monday, September eighteenth. That's the same, that is a council meeting, so we're gonna warn it for five o'clock. And I told everybody it has to be done by ten minutes after six. And the notice hasn't not gone out yet, but it will go out, where are we? It will go out, ha, I've got my calendar up.
This is a follow-up to the meeting they had?
They had the first meeting on August ninth.
Right.
This is the second meeting, scheduled for Monday, September eighteenth. The notice will go out approximately the thirteenth or fifteenth. So look for that. We'll post it in all the usual places.
Meeting starts what time?
Five o'clock.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I did this folder sitting in front of me. Uh, that's back in...
New business?
Well, it's, no, it's old business. Is Seth still here? We got to sign loan documents for this new cruiser you got, that comes doing.
It was in the budget?
Yeah. Yeah, it was in the budget. Well, Seth, it was in the budget, but we had one map out on in March, we had to buy emergency one. Seth can explain. But you have to sign it. It's easy, we know for sure.
This is...
What specifically do you need clarification on, I don't understand? We had an emergency purchase of a vehicle in March.
Okay, yeah.
Warned many times ago.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah.
We purchased that one, purchased the new one that was in the fiscal year budget for this year.
That's what this one is, that we were approving, that was in fiscal year. You confused me by going back to March, that's what confused me. This is the one that's in this current fiscal year budget that we're in now. That's what I just wanted, the clarification, just so that, you should have phoned March.
Well, it was March.
Fine. All right.
And this one is an SUV.
Yes, we saw it today, getting its decals put on, that may go impressive.
So there's room on the front page for everybody's signature. I'll get that over to Ben.
Just the left page?
I got one, anybody want that?
Sure.
We got one left, we might have to have it.
Only one?
I can make one. I'm gonna take seven dollars to share. Take the only one I got.
Well, a photo isn't as good as a paper copy, so. Look.
Anything else, Mr. Johnson? Anything else for the council, council members? Then, the next city council meeting will be Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. And then the Centennial Planning Committee meeting will be September twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at five p.m. Then we need a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five. Motion made, is there a second? Made and seconded, discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?
Thanks for being here.